Hello Jim, how are you?
I thought you went TV the other night.
You did?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
We're ready, okay. Folks, it's about 7:08 and we are entered back into regular session. We are in executive session. And I want to welcome everybody to the Town and Situate Board of Selectmen's meeting. Right now, we're on Agenda Item Number Four, which is the walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins? If you could identify yourself and your address, Ms. Baker. It's good to see you.
Val Baker of 77 Brook Street.
77 Brook Street. Ms. Baker, what can we do for you?
I am Vice Chair for the Jenkins School Council. We had gone to the October 4th School Committee Meeting when they had done their first public budget presentation for the 11-12 school year. When we saw the dire picture at our following council meeting, there was a lot of discussion about it. So council members said, "I think we really need to draft a letter for School Committee, Selectmen Advisory Board just telling them our concerns and what we felt was absolutely necessary to be maintained to have education as we know it now." So the Jenkins Council did draft the letter. But after we did, we thought, the other schools probably, or the other councils, I'm sure, have the exact same concern. So rather than us presenting something, then each school doing the same thing, I invited all of the school councils to come for a joint meeting, which we did about a month ago. And there were at least thirty in attendance. So we met for three hours and we drew up this letter. And last night, I did go to School Committee. They were not unfamiliar with this since some of the School Committee had actually attended the same meeting. So I presented it to them. It is written to the Situate Selectmen, School Committee, the Advisory Committee, and Public Schools Administrative Council. I did see Bob DiLorenzo this morning, so I did give him this letter, which he said when they had their meeting on the sixteenth that he would give it to them. So if you don't mind, I would just like to read this. It is signed by many members of School Councils. So when I finish, I'll give this to you, Mr. Danahue.
Sure.
Okay. "The Situate Public School Councils are struggling with the fact that we're currently below minimum services in the Situate Public Schools for the 2010-2011 school year. Any cuts beyond this year's level will devastate the Corps of Education for our children. If the current financial forecast is not changed by the economy or the town-controlled finances, education as we know it in Situate will no longer exist. The current picture of schools in 2010-2011 is teachers and students are struggling to meet Massachusetts curriculum expectations and make adequate yearly progress as mandated by No Child Left Behind due to the reality that Situate High Schools accreditation is jeopardized due to lack of course offerings. Some courses at Situate High School have thirty-plus students in a class. Some students at Gates may experience two to three directed study halls during a day dependent on trimester. This equates to ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty minutes per day of no direct instruction in addition to lunch. There can be upwards of eighty-plus Gates students in a directed study during a period. Some classes at Gates have thirty-plus students in a class. Some grade levels, one through three, are experiencing twenty-five-plus students in a class. Some grade levels, four through six, are experiencing thirty-plus students in a class at the elementary level. As a district, we're struggling to meet the promise of the Situate Public Schools' mission statement, 'to provide the opportunity for a comprehensive education for all students,' end quote. If there is no change in the financial picture, the Corps of Education must be protected. According to state and federal mandate, the Corps of Public Education is reading instruction, communication instruction, including writing and speaking, mathematics instruction, science instruction, high-level thinking, and problem-solving. We believe that a priority must be set to protect the above mandates and the following basic services programs in order for our students to meet the needs of our students. We ask the Situate Public Schools Administrative Council and the Situate Public School Committee to preserve practical and functional class sizes for students at all levels, academic support, which would be literacy and mathematics specialists, and optimum direct instruction and time on learning. As school council members, parents, and educators, we acknowledge that a well-rounded educational experience includes other aspects of a school environment. We fear and recognize the fact that areas such as foreign languages, athletics, art, music, physical education, technology, and social-emotional services may be sacrificed as a result of the anticipated budgetary reductions in 2011-2012." And we have signed it "educationally yours."
Thank you.
And I know that none of this is news to you.
No, I appreciate the letter. I just want to, one comment, we can't discuss it because it's a walk-in and we can't...
No, and that's...
But I just want to say that the Board is acutely aware of the situation, as well as the School Committee, Town Administrator, and the Superintendent. The issues you've raised, obviously, we've been trying to address since the summer jointly. And in conjunction with that, I'd also comment and say that there are many priorities that the Town is trying to address, schools, as well as the Town Services, in light of the fiscal and the financial situation that not only the Town of Situate, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and obviously, the rest of the nation's facing. And we're trying to hopefully resolve those in our upcoming budget process, starting our next meeting. But I thank you. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to give it to you before you start.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Baker.
I thank you very much.
Actually, if you could give that to Ken Donovan, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you again. Happy holidays. Other walk-ins? Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, I'd like to move on to the next Agenda Item, which is Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion Vote. Change of Manager at the Inn at Situate, 7 Beaver Dam Road. On behalf of the applicant, I see Ms. Ferguson. Would you please come on up here? I am going to recuse myself at this point, and I'd ask that my Vice Chair, Mr. Norton, take over at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Just your name and address, once again, for the record.
Sure. Linda Ferguson, 57 Kingsway.
And you would like to take over as manager of the Inn, basically.
Yes, that's a nice way to put it. Yes.
Yep.
The former manager has chosen a different path, and that leaves me.
Questions for the Board?
You're currently the General Manager, right?
Yeah, and so I'd be, you know, as the manager of the pub and in as well.
Motion?
Motion, please. For the floor, anybody? Motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a change of manager from the Inn at Situate Harbor, 7 Beaver Dam Road, to Linda Ferguson.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next Agenda Item. We're beyond, if I'm not mistaken. For 7:10, a Discussion Vote, Liquor License Hearing, Transfer of the License, The River Club, 78 Border Street. However, we're starting that instead of 7:10 at 7:14. So if the applicants are here, if they'd come forward, please, and address the Board. Is this... If you could identify yourselves, tell us your name and address, it'd be greatly appreciated for us. If I could start with you, ma'am?
Yes, Ms. Kiki Lazarus, 77 Border Street.
Kiki Lazarus, 77 Border Street?
George Lazarus.
George Lazarus, 77. Okay. And you're looking to transfer the liquor license from, I know you have the next two Agenda Items, but transfer it from the current MWB LLC, doing business as The River Club, to Nana Enterprises LLC, doing business as The River Club, 78 Border Street, Situate, Mass.
Yes.
Okay. Can I just generally, why are you transferring it? What's the explanation that you're doing? Obviously, you're transferring it to yourselves. From whom?
From the people that had leased it before.
Okay. You're the owners?
They're leasing it.
Going back to them.
You're the owners?
They're the original owners since 1972.
Okay, so you're looking to get the liquor license?
I've had it years ago, and my name. And now I just want it back.
Okay. Fair enough. And I know that you've set up two different entities between the owners and then the entity that's leasing it. Fair enough.
We have the land and the business.
Separate, okay. Questions from the Board?
Just a comment. Familiar with the Lazarus, they've had this license for a long time. They run a great establishment down there when they had it. So I enthusiastically look forward to...
Just, I didn't see a doc, is there a document in here? Did they, where are they writing something to give it back to you? Was that, did you see that? I assume they want it.
Yeah, yeah, they definitely are giving it. There should be a document or a paper.
So that was a business, is their lease expired? Or did they sell, or...
The lease didn't expire, they left.
They left?
They left.
Okay. So John, you may know better, does it, is there some sort of written, because technically, they have the license now.
I'm assuming they abandoned, and you say they left.
Also, the MLB was supposed to be here, but he's not here. But he also signed, I believe, that, somewhere in the papers there. Excuse me, it's under petition for transfer of ownership. It's about ten pages long.
Who's he? Just so I have the...
Frederick Simont.
Oh, yeah, I did see that. You're right.
And the signatures are at the bottom of the page.
Yep.
Okay, so this document, right? Certificate of Authorization?
Transfer, it's right here. That's it, right there. Yep. That's Fred's signature. Not that I can read his signature, but that's his scribble.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Motion?
Questions? Motion, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the transfer of a common vicular's, all kind of alcoholic beverage license, held by MWB LLC, doing business as The River Club, to Nana Enterprises LLC, DBA, The River Club, 78 Border Street, Situate, Mass. The premise is consisting of one floor, five entrance, exits, in-exits, main reception area, buffet lounge, bar lounge, outdoor porch, bridal suite, kitchen restaurants, and basement from boiler and storage.
Second. Motion seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion?
What are you going to do with it now? Are you just going to run it as, as The River Club?
We're running it right now, right now, we're just going to run it the moment.
Run it as it is?
As is, at the moment.
Okay.
Fair enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere yet. Don't go anywhere. No, 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 you're next. Agenda Item Number Seven, which is a Discussion Vote, Transfer of Entertainment and Common Vicular's License for The River Club, 78. So in conjunction with the liquor license, in order to function as a going concern, you need to have the vicular's license as well as the entertainment license. So in order to have events there, you need both these. Again, discussion from the Board? Any questions, rather, before discussion?
I assume that same document holds true for this. I don't know if they're necessarily applying for it?
They're actually applying.
Is it a transfer or an application?
It's an application, but it, we put it as a transfer. It's a transfer liquor license.
Because we're doing all those tonight, anyway, so it's...
They expired the 31st, so basically, you're right. It's really, you're applying for an essence to take it over. All right.
And you can have the same, same ban, I mean weddings and all this sort of stuff.
Other questions? Discussion? A motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to tran, uh, transfer, I guess, the common vicular's license, entertainment license, from MWB LLC to Nana Enterprises LLC, 78 Border Street, Situate, to be executed upon successful completion of the liquor license transfer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Folks, thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You too.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, a Discussion Vote, Solar Array. Mr. Banger?
Thank you.
Would you be so kind to come up?
I'm here with your Renewable Energy Committee, who are going to join us.
Who's this? Mr. Reedy. It's always good to see you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Come on up.
Let's get it, let's get everybody sitting around.
Because this is, this is the solar topic, but these are the people that brought you the wind turbine, which is going to produce fifty percent of the power renewably in Situate. Instruction to begin this winter.
If I could, I'd like to introduce, I know Mr. Toppin's here. Unfortunately, I see another Agenda Item later on, but Mr. Toppin, and who else is on your committee?
Mr. Don Salmon's here.
Thank you.
And Kathy Loftus.
Thank you.
Bill Limbacher, is Bill here?
Mr. Limbacher, yes, he is.
Oh, yeah, we said that Bill would sit in the back, but he'd stay quiet, but he said, "I've never sat in the back and stayed quiet." Right, Bill?
He's about right.
Bruce Meacham.
We'll put him in front then.
And of course, you know Chairman Reedy.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Committee, I've worked with the Committee as kind of their technical resource, done the, some of, take notes and do things like the typing. And the summation of what the Committee is, that we're recommending that Town enter into a contract with, contract negotiations for a property lease and a power purchase agreement to supply electrical power to the Town from a solar array constructed on top of our Driftway landfill. Last spring, you authorized the Renewable Energy Committee and the DPW to go out and solicit proposals to find out, what does it look like if we were to do this? What's the feasibility? And what's the savings opportunity? To find an energy developer who would finance, design, construct, maintain, own, take responsibility for operating a utility-grade solar array on top of our landfill on the Driftway, about fifteen acres of land. In September, after the RFP was issued, nine firms responded to that. The Renewable Energy Committee has worked probably every Monday or Tuesday night through October and into November, interviewing the firms. They evaluated all the proposals first on the qualitative factors, such as their experience with landfills, their experience with solar, their financing capability, and what their ownership structure looked like, were they a nice, tight-knit firmer, with a bunch of ten partners all working together. And then, then, then after that, then looked at the economics of each one of their energy price commitments. Seven firms were interviewed following the evaluations. Two firms were not interviewed because they didn't meet certain criterion. Four firms were then invited to provide additional information, detailed about their company, about their proposals, their financing capabilities, that sort of thing. And then based upon further evaluation of all that data, the Committee unanimously, unanimously voted to select a firm called Brightfields Development of Wellesley as the most capable energy partner. So the, from the Town's standpoint and from the Committee's standpoint, you can discuss it further, we recommend that the Town enter negotiations with Brightfield for a lease and a power supply agreement. And the recommendation is based upon the fact of the economic benefit, overall economic benefit to the Town being $260,000 a year savings for twenty years. That's about a $5.2 million savings to us over this twenty-year period. It's not only the economics, the economics are important, but also, what's important is, can they pull it off? Because this is a $10 million investment that they will make. They will have $10 million of equipment on top of our landfill. They'll own it, they'll have to maintain it. The contract locks them into providing electricity. If they don't provide a certain amount of electricity, they have to pay us for our loss of that electricity. And then they have to be able to keep it running for twenty years, because of course, they're, they're not likely to make any money if, if we don't make any money. The firm that was selected, Brightfields, has as their background brownfields. They've, they've taken over landfills in California, North Carolina, and Massachusetts. These would be closed, landfills that were essentially Love Canal-type sites, so they're very familiar dealing with state, federal, and local regulations on managing landfills. And that's pretty exciting. So they've got a long history at that. They've also done some solar on top of the landfills. They're, for instance, they're doing solar on top of the landfill in Woburn. That, interestingly enough, that Woburn site is the one that's the feature of the movie called...
Civil Action.
Civil Action.
Yes, right. So they're, they're responsible, they've been given that responsibility to manage that site. And then lastly, their immediate partner on the solar side is called Solar Designs. Solar Design has been in the industry for, back in the Jimmy Carter administration, they were, they had the project to put solar on top of the White House. They're going back now to put, it turns out, the Reagan administration took the solar off, but now the Obama administration's asked the solar to be put back on. That's just a small piece of it, but they've done fourteen sites equivalent to ours for N-Star. They've done two sites equivalent to ours for National Grid. They've done the Boston Convention Center with a site with more power than what we're producing. They've done American Embassies all over the world. They've done work for Public Service of New Hampshire, Harvard University, Public, what's... PBS. PBS. They did the PBS project, so they've done, so we're very convinced that their capability to pull this off is preeminent. So anyway, that's where we're leaving it. We suggest that if you recommend, if you agree to proceed as we recommend, then we would engage council, experienced in negotiating energy contracts, the ones we use with wind turbine, and begin working on a contract. We think that within two months, we're back with everything all sealed up.
When would they, assuming that everything worked, the clock worked, when would they begin to construct and start putting up panels?
If, if we were able to reach, if, let's say, in January, we could reach contract agreement with them, which you would sign ultimately, the contracts, then they can, unlike wind turbine, where there's a long lead time for the materials, the materials are available, and so they would begin construction in the spring and could be looking at the sky in the fall and generating power. So I'd say a one-year construction timeline.
Questions from the Board? Sean?
No, go ahead, Joe.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think over the past year or so, we've had conversations with Mr. Reedy, and so I can attest to the number of times that they've met, dealing with this. And I can also, based on Paul's thoughts and enthusiasm that he generated about the whole Committee. I mean, not a conversation went, went by without him mentioning how thrilled he was to be serving on a Committee with the likes of the people that he had on there. Some of them I didn't know, but after talking to Paul, I get to know their reputation that they must have in the field, because he was so, so complimentary and so high on them. So thank you all for serving. It looks like you're everything that Paul told me over the past year, so thank you all.
Just with that being said, Joe, if I could take a minute, obviously, people in Town know Peter. You know, he's an engineer by background, so when, when these companies came in, he's been fantastic, because he's familiar with the processes of, you know, bringing in contractors and doing projects of large magnitude like a lot of these. So his insights were great. We have Junaid Yasin, who's not here tonight. Junaid's an engineer by trade as well. He has been terrific, because he had worked in this field.
That's all he does.
It's pretty much all he does. So sometimes, these companies would come in, and any question that we didn't know to ask, Junaid would just, you know, pinpoint and just save us, you know, half an hour of just a normal discussion, because he'd say, "Look, let's just cut to the chase, you know, three issues, one, two, three," and immediately, everybody was, you know, right on track. Kathy Loftus works for Whole Foods and does their green energy. So it's also interesting, since some of these companies that would come in, there was recognition with, it's a, you know, they're seeing each other at trade shows, and it gave you that comfort of, there were people that knew each other and should have the helpful insights in terms of what she's experienced with Whole Foods, et cetera.
Awesome entity.
Yeah. Similar, I mean, when we started doing the electrical comparisons across the Town with all the different meters, he spent an inordinate amount of time trying to figure out where the meters were and work of that nature, as well as, a lot of the packages that we got from the RFPs, they always, good enough through the Town Administrator to send out. You know, we were getting back binders that were massive, so we'd just try to say to each other, "Look, let's try and do, you know, a binder a week, get through it, and then figure out where we're going to go, prioritize, categorize, and then get in front of these people and have our questions ready for them." Bruce had been involved with his own project, Noelwell, and is very familiar with things of this nature. He just came on recently in the past year. Bill Limbacher, fantastic, obviously, everybody knows Bill. But even tonight, we were just laughing. We were always trying to stay ahead of the curve and be, you know, stay in the, in the lead with the turbine. And there were little intricacies with zoning, et cetera, where Bill obviously was right on it, knew exactly what to do. And for a while, we were neck and neck with Plymouth, we got out ahead of them, and most recently, we're finding out that apparently, they just recently contacted Al to say, "Can we look at his zoning bylaw?" Obviously, go back to Bill, because Bill was the one that did a lot of the legwork with that. Did I forget anybody? Mark Calvin?
He's not on the Committee.
He's not on the Committee, but he's a lawyer with Wilmer and Hale, and he's a local resident. And when we first met him at some of the different meetings, he agreed to come back and just sit in on the meetings, and just to have, you know, kind of pro bono legal advice. And everybody that came in knew him because of what he does. And he writes a lot of the new rules and regs for the federal government. So the, the great part about it was, as Joe's alluding to, when we had these discussions, was it was great as the Committee came together, and also, I'm a little bit all over the place, because...
Really?
But it was great with Al, because Al kind of came, came on, just kind of would bring all the thoughts together and, and keep everything, you know, focused and moving along, where I could sometimes get sidetracked, and, and we were able to keep a good pace going. So it was great. And I just, I think tonight, just to thank everybody that came, it was, it obviously wouldn't be here without everybody's help and the full interaction. And just so the people in Town know, I mean, if you look at the two projects, and you look at the amount of money, granted, as Peter alludes to, when we started, I think the wind turbine, was it eight years?
Six years.
Six years? Six years we've been at that, and then a few years with this. But the net, net of it all, if you accumulate the two projects together, it's...
It's a half million dollars a year.
A half a million dollars a year for twenty years.
With no investment.
And no investment.
No investment.
Janine pushed that from day one. When we first got together, he said, "Let them tell you what you need to build and let them pay for it." And we've taken that approach consistently. I was right on with that when he came in and joined in, with that whole theory. And when people in Town say, "It's taken so long," and you look them in the eye and you say, "And it didn't cost us a dime, and we're going to save $350,000 to $500,000 a year."
Well, we're doing something right if we're doing that. And you guys actually did.
And if I may, I will be so bold to say, you need to take that same approach with your Committee that's reviewing the old Pier Forty-four location. The charge you have given them includes financial responsibility, and that shouldn't be the case. Let the developers do that.
So just all in all, it's kind of cool to be here. It's great that Al had thought to maybe get us all together to get in here. I didn't think it had been that long, but it has been that long. And as I just told these guys, I was a little late to my meeting tonight, because I have a daughter going to high school next year, and I still can't believe that. So here we are, two projects down, and hopefully, we'll keep plodding along. And again, we're going to be sad to see Peter go. His resignation's on the agenda tonight, but, you know, after the amount of time he spent, I think he's saying, you know, it would be nice to take a little break. But we'll keep plugging along, and I know you guys just wrote at the last town meeting, the ESCO projects that we're going to start taking on, and we'll just try and keep moving along from here.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Yeah. Tony?
The, the project itself, is it, is the, the savings that you plan, it says up to fifteen acres. Is it, is it actually going to take up the full fifteen acres?
Well, the, the whole thing is around twenty acres. It will take up the...
Well, the, the whole thing is around twenty acres. It will take up the majority of the usable land up there. There will, included in the project is, as you come up to the top, there'll be a twenty by twenty shelter, picnic-like shelter, that will include a interactive electronic display that will show constantly what's being produced and will have discuss solar energy. And then additionally, they're gonna put those same displays, I think, one in Town Hall and one in the, in one of the schools or some stuff like that. And then offer also a, a series of, there's a lot of training advice for like the fifth grades teacher to teach this stuff, and then the science teachers can teach this stuff, you know, aids in that sort of thing.
So, and the other part of that was they said they'd make it web-based. So that any of the science teachers at any of the classrooms at any of the schools, if it does fit in with their their, their plans and, and what they're teaching, they can just as easily log onto a site and essentially show the layout of the project on the landfill and, and show exactly on whichever day, whether the sun's really out and doing, you know, a great job, or whether it's cloudy, how much it's generating, be able to monitor it on a day-to-day.
So is there gonna be like public access, then in other words, like a trail that you can go up, and when you say there's a, some, people can go up and look at the solar array, but also, I know I've seen people, I saw a gentleman running actually up there and, and saw obviously a views, but I'm like, is that a part of the component?
Path up there?
Yeah.
That's not gonna be developed any further, but the, and the entire project will be fenced in because of, I mean, it's a power plant.
But the public access will be for this kiosk, which is an informational kiosk, and also we'll take advantage of the view that's up there. Okay, good. Sorry.
Essentially, what they did say though is it's a power plant, so they're not gonna have people go beyond the boundary line.
Makes sense.
Because you're talking about two megs.
And, and as we all know, this is a sensitive piece of property. Just to reiterate, we met with Ty and Bond a month ago. And went over other uses of that property. And, and just so people are aware of the fact, you know, they were pretty straightforward in saying that there's not, there's no capability of putting fields on that piece of property unless you wanna put in hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a, a buffer over this possible sinkholes and stuff for, I think he said fifteen to twenty years. So I think in our evaluation of this, we, we realized that that is not a use. So all of you people were hoping for soccer field, lacrosse field, baseball field, or whatever field up there. It's really not in the cards right now. And the lease for this property, is, is it a twenty-year lease? Is that what, what most people are looking for?
Yeah.
So after twenty years, if a new form of power came in place and arrays were obsolete, then at that point in time, that, that will probably have settled to the point of some alternative use.
Exactly. And the revenue stream through the choices that the town makes in budgeting can be used for reinvestment in things such as redeveloping other areas we have, like the Driftway Park for fields or, or other town properties. So I think.
And that's a great idea that Al had. The, the savings itself of the two sixty per year, is that a simple calculation in terms of, you know, power is three dollars a unit and we're gonna get it for a dollar a unit and we expect to produce?
Yeah.
As we all know, you can make a spreadsheet, say whatever you want it to say. I assume you guys have beaten up those numbers, but is it, is it that simplistic?
It is, it's very simplistic. It doesn't take into the time value of money because we're not, don't have a value, we don't have an investment here. So it's not like we're putting money down, we gotta amortize that. It simply takes today's power costs and says that if power went up three percent per year, okay, and then compares it to the price offered for the specific years here, that we end up saying that they're offering us a price of call it ten cents over twenty years, and the power company is offering us a price of twenty cents over those years. Today's electricity costs us fourteen cents. So it's a very conservative look at, you know, if we, if, if electricity didn't go up at all, we'd still be making savings in the order of between eight and four cents per kilowatt hour through the whole twenty-year period.
And just based on how much we're using right now?
Yeah.
And we have the capacity, I guess you sell it back to the, if you don't use it yourself, you just sell it back to the.
What happens is the, there's a meter at the field, the same way the wind turbine. There's a meter at, at, that measures the electricity produced. Okay? Some days it's not, some days it is. Okay? Two people read that meter. The Bright Fields reads the meter and sends us a bill. National Grid meets, reads the meter and sends us a check. Okay? Their check is bigger than ours by this two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty a year on average. You know, it grows from like one eighty in the first year to three seventy in the twentieth year, based on the assumptions, but that's, that's how, then we get, so it's just a, it's just a cash into the, what do you call it? The general ledger. Cash in.
And then we'll figure out where that can be applied, where the funds can go. The, the last question I had was, you saw, you saw a lot of people, nine people's a lot, a lot of time to look at it. Are there, are there a couple of things that stood out for this company? I mean, it was unanimous, so you, you listen to all these people and, and this, these rose to the top. What were the one or two things that made this company the one that you wanted to go with?
First and foremost was their past dealings with landfills. Second issue was that they, everybody had a relationship, or most, most of the companies had a relationship with Ty and Bond. They, they alleviated a lot of my concerns. Just so everybody knows is we're doing a cantilevered system, so it's not even gonna, it's gonna rest on top. It's it's not, it's, there's gonna be no penetration.
Like a base cement slabs.
Just ballasted. And, and through all these different discussions, and absolutely, actually with everybody being, you know, everybody that's an engineer having these discussions, we were very, very concerned about down the road. As you brought up Ty in talking about, we're doing a field. I mean, essentially, these guys laughed at us and said, the worst thing in the world you could possibly do up there because of ethane and all these other issues, and then getting into runoff and all these other concerns. Our concern with them was more or less, we had said to them, look, we even built into the price that you guys would take over that liability. They said, yes, no one else would touch it. That was a huge issue. And I had said to the group from the selectmen's camp, camp, when you're looking at it, your real issue is, yeah, it's great to have a revenue stream coming in, but I don't want any liability down the road. And they really alleviated those concerns. Another part of the calculation, we talked about the numbers, is a, a tax credit that's going away at the end of December this year. Thirty percent federal tax credit for these types of projects if they go into the ground. A lot of these companies come out and say, well, your pricing's contingent on us being going now. These guys come out and say, we don't even care. We have investors that don't care. It's not even in our numbers. Took the heat off of us. We figured we could take more time to plan.
And then solar, the solar guy?
Yeah, and the solar, the solar person that works with these guys, when he came in and started talking about how he, he's been doing it since the seventies. A lot of these companies came in and their people were doing it since two thousand four, five, six, seven, when it became like the new thing to do. And when he brought up the, the White House, the Carter administration, PBS, Harvard University, I mean, this guy just rattled these things off one after another. And essentially, he'd look at some of the projects and say, well, the reason why you need X amount of that space up there, the angles, the this, the that, with the sun going, whatever way, and he, he knew far more than anybody that sat in front of us. And it was one of those, we walked away and we thought, he was a little bit eccentric, but at the same point, you knew the guy knew his stuff inside and out. And then just also with the numbers, what, what these guys were nice about, which some of the other people, you know, we, we, just it was great because we, we actually had some of these people go back twice, which they probably weren't happy about, but we kept digging and digging and digging. And what we found was a lot of the people didn't wanna guarantee a, a base rate in case something went wrong. We wanted to make sure the town was still covered. We had our own insurance on it. A lot of them came out with the idea, we don't, we don't wanna guarantee year to year. Well, we, we kind of accumulated, came together and said, well, would there be something we could work on, on like a three-year rolling average? Kind of like, I was thinking in our industry where, you know, mutual and portfolio owners just get paid on a three-year average versus having a great year and then a terrible year, and then their bonus gets screwed up. They came out, and a few of these guys, and certainly this group said, hey, we love that three-year rolling idea because it gives us much more latitude. And we don't have to worry about a great sunny year versus a very bad year. And on a three-year, we know it levels the, the curve. So I mean, there were, there were, I can't even imagine, like, it seems simplistic, the math that we're looking at when you're looking at these spreadsheets, but when you go back into the formulas that we were using, there's SREC credits, there's all the, I mean, this, this, it's multifaceted, multi-variable approach that all these things came into. And what we tried to do is just break it down to the most simplistic element to know that, one, our downside's guaranteed, two, our liability's covered, and three, the folks that we're dealing with are legit and they're not new to the game.
Great. Go ahead. Good. Any other questions? Sean, Joe?
Paul just answered them all. The biggest thing that jumped out at me was that this company was gonna take responsibility. That's what stuck into my mind. And I just wanted Paul to mention it, and he already did. Some people, and I know they're not gonna penetrate the membrane that we use to cover the landfill. And you said it floats. I just wanted to hear you say, and Al.
And they, they really knew the whole issue of loading on a square, square footage basis, et cetera. You know, all in all, it was a great thing. It seemed like you're taking account of a college course, because I was just kinda hanging with everybody, listening to the questions and saying, wow, I hadn't, you know, thought of a lot of that, but also it was kinda why, it was kinda neat because the group is, you know, very proactive, and it was a dynamic thing that just kind of facilitated itself. And then the tough part was at the very end figuring out, you know, top four, who do you go with? And here are the reasons why. We had to spread our sheets around and did our grades and came out with what we came out with. So hopefully,
Motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for a large-scale solar array at the Driftway Landfill to Bright Fields Development LLC of Wellesley, Massachusetts, contingent upon successful completion of contract negotiations.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, saying none. Any questions from the audience? Saying none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Folks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Very much. You're a great job. And you know what? Mr. Lindbacher, you didn't say anything, even though you're on the back bench there. Thank you, Bill. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, a vote opened the annual town meeting warrant for April eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Any motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to open the annual town meeting warrant at seven forty-six P M.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion, saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten. Discussion, vote the annual license renewals. We have a number.
Want me to read them?
As the clerk?
Yes.
Do we need to say anything?
You have to.
So just move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following liquor license for the year two thousand and eleven. The Barker Tavern, Situ, I just run right through them, Kim? Uh, Situate Tavern, Cosmos Cafe, Harborside Wine and Spirits, The River Club, Hathley Golf Club, In It Situate Harbor, The Village Market, PJ's Country House, Finn's, Reynolds Package Store, Situate Post three one six nine VFW. Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Hamar Corp. What is that? I have a question.
Let's go through them, or, okay, go ahead.
That's for the wine and malt beverages store that's in Hammurrock that's attached to San Zen Cafe. So they're two different corporations.
San Zen Cafe, appropriately next. Situate, Situate Package Store, JBNJ Foods, Inc., DBA Tedeschi's Food Shop, Situate Racket and Fitness, Oro Restaurant and Widow, Widow's Walk Golf Course.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to abstain from the In It Situate on that one vote, so. Next motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common vehiculars license for two thousand and eleven. Barker Tavern, Situate Tavern, Cosmos Cafe, The River Club, Hathley Golf Course, In It Situate Harbor, The Village Market, PJ's Country House, Finn's, Reynolds Package Store, Situate Post three one six nine VFW, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, San Zen Cafe, JBNJ Foods, Inc., DBA Tedeschi's Food Shop, Situate Racket and Fitness, Oro Restaurant, Widow's Walk Golf Course, Cersei's Grotto, Dad's Place, Dribbles, Dunkin' Donuts Driftway, Dunkin' Donuts Harbor, Egypt Country Store, Harbor House of Pizza, Hennessy News, Maria's Subs and Pizza, Mary Lou's News, Morning Glory's Bakery, Silent Chef, Patriot Cinemas, Inc., and Wilbur's North.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
unanimous? I abstain from, again, the In It Situate, Kim.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for two thousand and eleven. Barker Tavern, The River Club, Hathley Golf Club, In It Situate Harbor, PJ's Country House, Finn's, Situate Post three one six nine VFW, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, and San Zen Cafe.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, abstain from In It Situate, Kim. I'm gonna abstain for the next one.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the In It Situate, the Inholders license for the In It Situate Harbor for two thousand and eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. All right.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class Two licenses for two thousand and eleven. Alfred Coyle, DBA Seacrest Auto, Automotive Depot, Inc., Driftway Auto, James P. Donovan, and McBrien's Diagnostic Repair.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion, saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class Three licenses for two thousand and eleven. Ryan Allen's LLC Ray's Repair Shop.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion, saying none. All in favor? Aye.
I'll abstain, Joe.
Abstained by Mr. Harris. Three, zero.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Hockers Peddlers license for two thousand and eleven. Paul Crowley, Joseph Hughes, Nana's Homemade Beach, uh, Nana's Homemade Beach Buns, Sereneta Seaside Chocolatier, Holly Hesse, Mouse Cakes, PJ Hot Dog Express, Sandra Higgins, Ralph Young, Philip Edwards, Barbara Keefe, and Peter Terode.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris.
Discussion, if I may.
Discussion.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. The awarding of a Hockers Peddlers license by this board allows these people, or anyone else that has a Hocker Peddlers license, to, to sell their wares in the town of Situate.
Yes.
They cannot be asked for money from any other organization to sell their wares.
Correct. So in other words, you get a Hocker Peddlers license, and you wanna go out for an event to sell certain items. You, this license in and of itself grants you the ability to sell it, and you don't need to be contributing or paying towards any event. You have every right to go to that event and sell.
Sell your wares. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sean?
You mentioned that, Joe. Don't they, on their licenses, Kim, have specific start and end dates?
And locations.
They do.
On their application? They, right, right. So not all of them, if you were thinking about Heritage Days?
No.
No, maybe that's not a good example. Saint Patrick's Day Parade.
Right.
And if some of these vendors are only set up for Memorial Day to Labor Day, let's say, then they don't have the right to do that.
But if they do go there, they have, they don't have the right to do it, but if they end up there, they can't be charged by the, by the
Event.
The event.
Okay, all right.
Two hundred dollars or a hundred dollars, something like that, that's what I say.
Now, Kim, do we go through every one of these and say that these people go to the Farm Village Market? Or the, I'm sorry, the Farmer's Market?
Each, each one of these vendors is specified where they sell.
So it'll say that on the license? We don't have to go through that, right? We don't have to go through that now.
It does say on the license. It's specific. These are renewals, so you always get it.
As it was.
Folks, you should know, folks can also get a state peddler's license, Hockers Peddlers, and if they have a state one, they don't need a local one, and they can go to any event as long as they have that license.
I think that was more to my point. I think there were situations in the past where people had state Hockers Peddlers licenses, came down to events here and were charged by the event organizers. And I, that's incorrect. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be charged. They shouldn't have had to pay. That's, and I wanna make that clear.
So fifty vendors could come down to Heritage Days and set up, set up camp or whatever they want.
A hundred vendors could.
Yes.
Or just Saint Patrick's Day parade.
Okay, but they'd have to come and get a permit from Town Hall?
No, they don't. The state supersedes.
Preempts the, the local.
A hundred vendors could come down and say, Patrick's Day, and sell at the parade.
Correct.
However, I think if they're selling on a regular weekly basis, you can have a local ordinance. You can have a local, that's actually one of Kim and I, our goals, rep by twelve, because technically, any Hocker Peddler, that includes the PTO selling pins at an event, needs a Hockers Peddler. You can waive the fee. But that's just like, if you have, if you have a state one, you don't have our local. We can still have local bylaws around where and what, public ways or whatever, but, you know, other than the ones you grant here.
Is there a chance we can get that on the annual town meeting, that ordinance? Is that a bylaw?
What?
What you were just talking about?
Oh, no, we can do it procedurally. I mean, all those things are contained within the statute and, and your authority to grant Hockers and Peddlers now. We just, like many things, need to clarify history in terms of how they've been handled.
Well, I mean, the, the scenario that Joe just brought up, a hundred people come to Heritage Days, and all of a sudden, they start dropping their stuff on Front Street. How, how do you stop that from happening?
Right now, you can't in, in that, they have state licenses.
So they can say, I was here first?
No, they just say that our, my license.
Get a Hocker Peddler at a parade. Or some sort of that event where they know they'll be, and they're gonna sell balloons or, or something of that, like that. Those are the, those are the typical Hocker Peddlers.
You might be able to designate where they're gonna be selling, you know.
The chief can do that. The chief can do that.
My point was you can't charge them. The event can't charge them.
That would be correct. They have a license to hawk.
Yep. They, they can peddle a hawk.
Yes. They've already gone through that.
Love it.
Final clarification.
Name and address?
Anne Burbine, ten, eight, four, row. If I understand what Mr. Norton is saying, for Heritage Days, and I have been at a event organizing for the past, off and on for several years, we have food vendors that come in and we sell space to these food vendors. Therefore, we are in fact charging a food vendor who most likely has a state license. Am I to understand that we can't charge them to have a space at Heritage Days?
If they're a Hocker Peddler, they, maybe if they have a booth, it's a different story, but if they're.
Yeah.
If they have a cot.
You're charging a rental fee, right? Yes. Yeah, that's different. That's different.
But if someone came down to Heritage Days.
What Joe's referring to is, I guess, what you call a privilege freight fee, as opposed to.
If someone wanted to come down to Heritage Days and sell balloons, you know, the state. If someone wanted to come down to Heritage Days and sell balloons, you know, the state Hawker's Peddler's license, you might have a problem stopping them.
Outside the venue of the festival.
If they wanted to be down on Front Street, or down at the pier or someplace, you might have had that.
The areas I see it is like St. Patrick's Day Parade, where people come down and start selling items along the parade route, the Labor Day Parade in Sand Hills, where they come and sell items on the parade route, and then you have another issue, which is like the sandwich truck that could come down and sell at the, I don't know, you'll see them occasionally with MBTA, Work Zone, they can come and sell. They preempt the local jurisdiction because they have a state license, if you will, to be able to sell their wares, and that's, that's really what the issue is. But I think there are timing issues, and there are rental issues, and then there's also location issues where they can't just do it without, you know, when you have an event, they can't say, "I'm gonna be in the middle of the event because I have a state license." No, they're, you can, you know, shall we say, legislate where they're going to be, but you can't say, "No, you can't come at all." That's the problem.
And fortunately, we haven't had an issue, but to Anne's point, they have all these vendors that come and rent and do that, and sometimes then, and this happened in another community I was aware of, where it was a huge 4th of July parade, and all these state Hawkers and vendors show up, and they're taking away for what is a fundraising opportunity sometimes for the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts and things, and it can some be, sometimes be an issue with things like popcorn or things like that, but it's just something to be aware of.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
So, we had a discussion, now we need a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following accepted disposal licenses for 2011. All Town, K.R. Anderson Pumping Company, Joseph Bonomi, Rosanio Davis, P.F. Spencer, and Sporito Environmental.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion, saying none. All in favor? Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the bowling license for Situit Bowl Away for 2011.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the electronic games license for Situit Bowl Away for 2011.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris, who likes electronic games. All in, discussion? All in favor? Aye? Unanimous?
And lastly, move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the movie theater license for Patriot Cinemas, Inc. for 2011.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous. Thank you very much. So, Kim, do you have all that before we move on? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, which is the acceptance resignation of the Renewable Energy Committee from Mr. Peter C. Topham. And as I alluded to earlier, Mr. Topham is resigning from the Renewable Energy Committee. We want to thank Mr. Topham for his service, and I'd accept a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Peter Topham from the Renewable Energy Committee, and further, let the Board thank Mr. Topham for his years of service to the committee in the town of Situit.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion, saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
And again, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Other Business. Mr. Harris?
I might defer to Tricia on this. The Pier 44 Committee met the other night, and Tricia kind of led us on a little field trip down at the restaurant itself, and then back up here, well, after electricia taken from there.
Just, with Sean said, we met at 6:00, I think, and had to complete tour of the building, which most people are unaware of how large it is, and then came back here to go over the charge, elected chairmans, establish a schedule, and get some just operational things going. It's a very talented group, a very motivated group, and they'll be meeting every other week regularly, they've established a schedule through February. One what?
We need, but on a, on a down note, there was some emails exchanged, I think there was one member we appointed, unfortunately took a job from his...
Wisconsin, yes, yes. So, but the committee max is nine, you appointed nine, you originally had the option of just appointing seven, so I think, you know, unless you have a dying need to appoint another member right away, this group's certainly good to go. Their initial, there's two engineers and a building inspector on the committee, and, you know, their preliminary assessment was the building had very good bones, and the heat is going on tomorrow, the, you just have to make arrangements to now to get salvage for the kitchen, remaining kitchen.
Good. Mr. Norton?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Vignani?
Couple of quick things. I'll start with the sports report. I want to just congratulate the Situit High School football team this year, they had a great year, won a fabulous game on Thanksgiving Day against Hingham, a comeback from 20 to nothing to win the game 26 to 20 with 38 seconds left in the game. It was cold, but it was a great game, and then also made it to the semifinals for the state championship in our district, in our division, so that was a great year to those guys. Santa stroll, John, you may talk more about this, but it was a great event down at the harbor this weekend. Santa made his appearance via motorboat, and there were hundreds and hundreds of kids down there. It was just a great turnout and a great run event, and then up to Jenkins School after that for pictures with Santa and arts and crafts, and it was just a wonderful time. On that note, continuing, Community Christmas is in full gear right now, so anyone that has interest to participate in that, I think Susan Fipman is running that, so, and I'm sure there's an email address that you can get in touch with those people for that great charity, and...
Yeah, I'm like...
Lastly, the sidewalk that we talked about previously on...
Stockbridge?
Stockbridge, thank you. Drawn a blank. Spoke with Al about this earlier, because some of the people, they were asking what the status on that is, and engineering's being done on that, and they expect that to be completed for next fall, for the opening of the school next year, so...
For the engineering?
No, for the whole sidewalk completed.
Good.
Tony, what happened on Sunday?
On Sunday?
Train ride to Boston.
I didn't do that.
You did, well, you must have heard about it. Polar Express, I wasn't there, my daughter helped out, and again, I think it was a big success. What somewhat makes this town unique from other towns?
What was nice is that Santa, who showed up on Saturday for the, for the pier, showed up for the Polar Express train ride and did a phenomenal job, and we commend Santa for coming to Situit and doing that. I think Tony stole the thunder, but I commend Santa for participating. It's not easy, and during this busy schedule, you know, preparing for Christmas, so, thank you, Santa. The other issue is Hummer Rock had their Christmas stroll a week ago, you saw it in The Mariner, if you had it, if you had not, they did a wonderful job. This past Friday was First Friday, and the place was mobbed down on Front Street, so I commend the businesses and for First Friday and for Christmas, for the holidays, and also commend the town for their holiday party, Paula Berry and also Nicole Harris. That's all I had. You want to talk about North Situit? Please, Anne, tell us, North Situit.
North Situit, Santa's party by train at 5:00, at the North Situit train station, tree lining...
When? When?
Friday night.
There you go. Okay.
And Santa at the WPAG. The Stonehill, Nathan Park.
Good. So, get out there if you haven't seen Santa yet. This Friday night, North Situit.
And also, Farm Market here as well.
Shop locally. The merchants in town have great merchandise, and like John mentioned, Friday night, it